We just started.
Yeah, yeah, I checked there.
Kathy, you ready with that?
Just one second, please. 197.486. Do you have that one? 191. Okay, yes. Yep, almost done.
Okay, approval of the warrants. Did you, uh?
Sure.
Do the payroll warrant?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the payroll warrant in the amount of 191, 776 and 24 cents.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, one absent. Uh, bill warrant.
I'll make a motion to approve the bill warrant in the amount of 1,437, 480 and 62 cents, broken down as follows. Town bills, 92,937.6 cents. Pentucket assessment, 1,017, 752 and 38 cents. EE withholding, 7,144 and 85 cents. Special revolving, 37,681 cents. Water and sewer, 36,561 and 14 cents. Light department, 245, 44 and 43 cents.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, one absent. Appointments. No, no, approval of minutes. January 18th, 2022 minute, meeting minutes. Everybody read those over? They look to be in order?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January 18th, 2022. I have reviewed them.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor?
Yes.
One absent. Uh, appointments. Appointment of Julie Fabry, if I'm correct, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, F-A-B-R-E, R-I, to Nora Lane in Groveland, to the position of Assistant Clerk. Town Clerk effective, uh, February 1st. Part-time position, 10 hours a week, $21 an hour, subject to a successful query check. We have a, uh, letter from the town clerk in support of it. It was interviewed by the town clerk and the Board of Registrazione.
May I ask the starting date? Because that's what I was looking for. I, I read the resume and everything else, but I, I.
February 1st.
February 1st.
February 1st.
Is there a motion? Motion for, uh, appointment?
I'll make a motion to appoint Julie Fabry, uh, to the position of Assistant Clerk, effective February 1st.
Is the motion, is there a second?
I'll second. Um, this is an add to a friendly amendment. It's a part-time position of 10 hours per week at a rate of $21 an hour and subject to a successful query. Is that okay? Friendly amendment?
That's, uh, that's okay.
Suitable.
Um, any further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, one absent. Uh, presentation by Rosalyn Delacary, Northern Essex Community College Health and Wellness Survey conducted in Groveland. Is, is Rosalyn here?
Doesn't look like she's here, Mr. Chair. It does not look like she's here.
Okay. Well, maybe she'll be in later. Okay, we'll table that. Uh, discussion, possible vote. American Rescue Plan Act funding, project review. We've, uh, given a lot of, uh, supporting documents, requests. Somebody want to start that off? Anybody want to start? Bill?
Uh, how would you like me to start?
Well, I know you had worked some on this. We have, uh, do you want to go through each, each request? We have, uh, they're listed on the, on the She Deer Project, uh, number, the COVID test kits from the Board of Health, 6,000. We already took care of that. Approved that. We approved the, uh, the fire apparatus at 600,000. And we have, uh, voting booths and, uh, pure lead warrants, uh, the, uh, disinfecting warrants that the town clerk is looking for at 5,889. Outdoor message board, 3,068 dollars. Portable decontamination system at 30,000. EDPC, small business, uh, religiency, uh, religiency, uh, program. And, uh, $6,000 from the Garden Club for lost income. And there's, uh, an explanation on the other pages of all those requests. Do you have any comments, Bill?
The only part I worked on was trying to work on a Excel model, um, for the police and the fire.
Okay. Any comments on, uh, those requests? Uh, is this something, we're looking for a vote on them tonight?
Um, so at the last meeting, we were talking about some of the projects that were being proposed, um, by some of the departments and others for the American Rescue Funds. And we put together a list of the projects with the amounts being requested and the, um, supplemental information documenting that. As Selectman O'Neill stated, uh, he was very helpful in putting together an Excel spreadsheet to start the calculation, as Selectman McDonald had, um, leaned towards in a, in a system so that we could coordinate exactly how those monies would be divvied up for the hours that were worked during the, um, state of emergency. So that was included in your packet. So this is just to show you exactly all of the projects that we have before us. It looks like we have more than the allocation that is being given to us by the federal government. Um, I know there's a, a couple of members in the crowd that are, um, in support of some of these measures. If the Board would like to hear from them, uh, we're not looking for a specific vote unless the Board would like to take a vote, but just to let you know what projects we have, some of these projects before you, um, are capital improvement projects. Some of them, uh, fall under the water and sewer category, and then the ones you read just, um, above were in response to a public health emergency. Specifically with the public health emergency, there was, sorry. There were, uh, three of the requests were under the CARES Act funding that did not receive funding. Uh, they were, uh, projects that were later in the game, so they were not approved. So those were added to their request as well. Um, so it's essentially just what the Board would like to do. Would you like to start to address some of these requests? Would you like to start voting on what you'd like to see? Um, we have until 2024 to allocate the spending and 2026 to fully expend.
Okay, and, uh, Groveland was allocated 2,047,213 dollars in the requests for, uh, Sure, we could hear, uh, uh, we could hear, uh, from, uh, the requests. Uh, let's, let's do this Garden Club. I see them sitting in there in the front row, so that they don't have to stick around long. Uh, that shouldn't take too long. They're requesting $6,000 for lost revenue. Go ahead. Uh, who wants to, uh, who wants to start?
Well, hopefully you.
I want you to come up, sit, sit down in the hot seat there and, um, so everybody can see you and just, uh, give you a name so the people can see.
Diane Plantmira, 22 Mill Street, Groveland, um, member of the Groveland Garden Club. Uh, the Garden Club basically did not operate for much of the, during the pandemic. Still isn't in full operation. Um, so what I submitted to Rebecca was information about, uh, the lost revenue we had. And I think that this is important to the town because the Garden Club plants trees, takes care of, uh, a lot of the environment in the town, um, and, um, takes care of the Little Red Schoolhouse. And so we can't do any of these things without the revenue that we would have had with our fundraisers during those two years. Um, so we're requesting the amount of $6,000, which I think you have this piece of paper.
Yes.
The request, uh, information in front of you and all of the specific, um, revenue trends that we've had over the years. Do you have any specific questions?
Uh, all the money that you spend, uh, all the money you raise in a year, is that, is that spent in that, uh, in that year?
Um, we spend, uh, a good deal of it, uh, providing, uh, services to the town, providing services to the club members. Pretty much, yeah, it's spent every year.
Uh, what's your treasury? How much in your treasury?
Uh, Lori, are you on Zoom? We had our treasurer on Zoom and I don't know if she's still here.
Doesn't look like it.
No, she was, she's gone. I, I don't know what's in the treasury right now.
Anybody got any questions for Diane? Kathy?
No, I, no, you've provided this information before. It's pretty self-explanatory. I mean, you, you have to be able to pay for utilities at the Little Red Schoolhouse and you do that by these, um, events that you hold and for, until this past year, that was the first time you were able to hold your plant sale, is that right?
Right, right. We had a, um, Christmas sale at the Little Red Schoolhouse in, uh, just before the holiday. Um, and then we had a plant sale in June outside, yes. But the year before, of course, nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so that's the amount of money we raise every year to run our programs and to offer services to the town. We planted some material out in front of the town hall.
Yes.
Uh, ear request. Um, I don't believe we got, we did that on our own. Um, and, you know, we're happy to do those kinds of things, um, looking for opportunities around town to, um, make the town a prettier, more sustainable, ecologically sustainable place.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Diane?
So you're looking for lost revenues, uh, approximately $6,000 for the, basically you skipped 2020?
Yes.
Uh, did you ha, did you have expenses there in 2020 or was it a skip year on the expenses as well as the revenue?
Uh, we had some expenses. We had to keep the, the heat and, um, going at the schoolhouse. What other expenses we had? We didn't have any speakers. We didn't put any, uh, build any, plant any trees. We did a little bit out front, as I said, that was a small expense.
Is it fair to say whatever you collect in a, a given year, you, you, you spend in that given year?
It's pretty much true.
So you, you don't carry a cash balance, do you?
We have a cash balance. Um, we do have cash in the bank because we had a fairly successful two fundraisers last year in 2021. So we do have money in the bank now.
What do you have approximately?
I want to say around 6,000, $8,000. I'm not sure.
All right. Just.
Yeah, I had invited the treasurer.
See if there's a need. Are you, are you out of money or you have money?
No, we have some money.
Okay.
But, um, as I said, we would have had more.
Okay.
Had we had these, um, fundraisers that we normally have every year.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else? Bill?
Maybe I missed an annual operating expenses, roughly?
Did I give you that information? I don't remember.
You gave us a lost revenue page.
The lost revenue, yeah. Again, I had invited the treasurer and she's not there anymore, so, um, I don't know. I'm not on the Board. I took on this posi, this responsibility to ask because I know everybody was hurting in the club.
Yeah, I guess I, I understand the revenue side. You showed on the revenue side. I'm just trying to understand y, y, your, um, average annual operating expense to run the Garden Club. This way I can.
Yeah, it's, we, well, as I said to Mr. McDonald, um, we pretty much spend about 6,000 a year, um, in programming, in services, um, um, in keeping the building going.
So the 6,000 you're asking for is not just lost revenue, it's actually one year of, of operating expense?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for coming in again.
You want to go line by line on these? On this request? We've got nineteen, nineteen items? Line by line?
Yeah, number eight. I mean, uh, someone here from Highway? I mean, is that next?
Eight? Eight is the, uh, premium pay for eligible workers.
What am I looking at? Seven's Garden Club. Eight's, uh, premium pay for first responders.
Uh, somebody want to speak on that? Premium pay for, uh, eligible workers, police and fire? Sure.
Good evening. My name's Adam Samboy. I'm a detective with the Groveland Police Department and recently I was elected the President of the Groveland Police Union. I want to thank you all for entertaining the ARPA fund and the premium pay for first responders. I'd just like to state while I'm here, this isn't a demand by any means. This is a, if you don't ask, then, then you don't know. So I, I'd just like to start off with, the pandemic has really been in swing for 22 months. Over the past 22 months, the officers of my department, um, dispatchers as well, no one has complained, taken excess time off. They have been nothing but committed to their department, committed to this town. They've shown up every shift, 24/7, 3/65. That being said, I went to a, a seminar earlier today and it gave me some pretty interesting information about, uh, the ARPA funding, what some other cities and towns are doing with, with the money. And there seems to be a, a fairly average payout. It's to my understanding that the Board has entertained the, the, the thought of a, a payout for the police department. The 22 months broken down, um, 88 weeks at 40-hour weeks. I know our schedules are a little different, but, um, based out by that, it, it roughly equates to about 23 cents, uh, an hour per employee. My proposal or request, rather, would, uh, be that, uh, maybe consider a dollar 25 an hour for all the essential employees that, um, have been here through the pandemic over the last 22 months. It's a, you know, it's, it's a way to, it, it's, recognize that it's not the taxpayers. You know, it doesn't, it's not going to affect them by any means. And, um, you know, might be the, the first and only time, have an opportunity, you know, for, for funding of this nature. So, but, uh, I thank you for your time and allow me to speak.
Questions?
Yeah, is this, um, is this for fire and police?
I'm speaking on behalf of the, the, uh, police officers and, and the dispatchers. I would love the consideration for the fire department as well. I mean, they've been right there with us, but, um, I, I don't know, I don't think Chief, I can't speak for, for Chief Valentine.
Okay. So you come up based on an hourly?
Based on an hourly, um, the seminar we had today, there was, so.
I was, let me, uh, I was worked in a certain period of time?
Sure, yeah, yeah, uh, over the, the, the 22 months.
Okay.
That this, the, the money's been allotted.
So you have that quantified and?
Yeah.
And you think that's, 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 that's fair? I, I.
I think a dollar 25 is, you know, is, is fair, but I mean, um, like I said, the other, with the amount that I was, uh, given earlier, um, it broke down to about 23 cents an hour per, per employee.
I was thinking more. But, um.
Uh, I didn't want to be greedy by, by any means.
Yeah, and then, um, but I, I hadn't seen these other requests for some, uh, capital items, um.
I got a pretty good average of, of what the payout was today at the, at the seminar.
Yeah.
And I, I kind of wanted to fall right, right, right in that ballpark of what the other cities and towns were, were getting, the ones that were, you know, like I said, we're grateful that you're, you're entertaining it, so, um, some places didn't and.
But it's linear. It's based on hours worked. So if you only work 200 hours in that period, then you get.
Right.
200 times X. If you work 2,000 hours or more than you.
Exactly.
That's why.
Yeah.
Seems, seems reasonable. Wish it could be more, but maybe it will be. But fire has a different, uh, structure, I guess, and that's, I think what I, what we gotta, have to grasp with is how to reconcile and.
Sure.
You know, want to be fair to everybody, but.
Absolutely.
How, how do you balance that? I don't know the dynamics of.
Right.
I understand hourly.
I, I understand my, my chief, um.
Uh, uh, there's some jobs that are more at risk than others. Was that factored in or you, like the dispatcher might not be directly exposed to COVID, say, whereas somebody going, you know?
I, I, I included, you know, everybody within, within the building as one. We can't fun, dispatch is just as essential as everybody else. We can't function without them.
It's a team effort.
They're, they're the lifeline of the, the department. So, um, you know, we go where they tell us to go.
I understand.
We, we need them as much as, you know, they need us to, to do the job, so.
But it wasn't based entirely on risk. It's a team approach. It's the department.
Yeah, yeah, like, I'm speaking on behalf of everybody, the, the, the part-time officers as well as the, the full-timers and, and the dispatchers as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Kathy?
Hi, um, so thank you for coming to see us and thank you for bringing more information to us. Do you, did they document or is there a study somewhere that we can access to see? You spoke about the dollar 20-something being kind of in the middle of a study of cities and towns.
That number that I came up with, that was what was presented to me today. I, I spoke with Rebecca a little bit about, um, what would the entertaining offer was, and I didn't want to sit up here and discuss numbers and things of that nature, but.
Right.
I took 22 months or 88 weeks, rather, and averaged a 40-hour work week, and that's essentially what it, it comes out to, is 23 cents.
Yes, I'm, I'm asking you about the other number that you brought to us tonight, the dollar 20-something. I, I thought you brought that from a seminar that you went to.
The sem, the, so the seminar, um, I mean, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll share the numbers with you. So the seminar I, uh, went to today, the average payout for the cities and towns that are entertaining it are four to $5,000 for, per, per employee. And so the dollar 25 an hour, if you have the 22, uh, months averages right in that ballpark, just, uh, just shy of 4,500.
So do they have a document that we could get to look at that shows this?
I, I can contact, they're actually working right now, trying to. Get all of the, the town's information. You know, um, it was shared with me today that the highest paid was 6,000 per employee. And then the other ones are averaging four to 5,000.
Okay.
And there's, there are some cities and towns that aren't entertaining it at all.
Right, I understand that too. And I know, um, the city of Haverhill has announced they're going to do a stipend for employees that have been vaccinated.
Yes.
I mean, so that's another facet to this. Every time I pick up the newspaper, I feel like I read another facet to this. So the 22 months that you referred to, the timeline, is that just the emergency declaration period or is that from the date of the emergency declaration to today?
That was the information that was shared to me till, to today, to, to date. So I believe it was March that they put it into effect, so March of 2020, um, to, to January of 2022.
Okay, I mean, I guess, yeah, because I mean, that's a rolling window then. Every time you divide it, the money's going to be less, right?
Right, right.
You know, another two months is 24 months. So I guess I was more interested in looking at things within that timeframe when many of us were allowed to stay at home and tell, you know, whatever you want to call it, rook, work remotely and others could not.
Right.
That was my understanding of the term premium pay.
Okay.
For that period of time. So I guess I would be more inclined to, to want to look at it in terms of those months.
Okay.
And it's not to disparage anything you're doing right now. I mean, I get it.
No, 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 I, I understand.
The virus is still kicking around out there, but, you know, most people have now, or a lot of people have gone back to work.
Sure, absolutely.
So, yeah, any information that you can give to us certainly helps us in this decision-making. As you can tell from the list, we have a lot of competing needs.
Sure.
And, um, we just want to come up with something that makes sense and reflects well on the town and well, reflects well on our employees. And we can only have one chance to do this, to do it right and do it well. So I hope you would be patient with us.
Yeah, absolutely.
And understand that myself personally, I'm not prepared to vote further tonight. I just want to gather more information.
Absolutely.
Um, and as much as you can dump on us, please do so, because that's.
I, I can reach out.
All information that we don't see or hear some of the time.
I can reach out to them. I know they're actively putting it together as the information comes in, as certain towns are doing what they're doing. So that's how they're collectively putting the information together, but I can reach out and see if they can provide me with the information that they already have.
That would be wonderful. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, um, just a couple of questions. The 23 cents an hour, where did you get that figure from?
I broke down the 88 weeks that it would have been. The, the amount was $2,000, so I just divided that.
Well, here's the thing. With, with, um, Rebecca's help, I developed a model that is based on one year.
Okay.
It basically factors out all the personalities, all the BS. It's strictly based on numbers. And I just did some quick calculations here. The model that I'm looking at for you ranges in pretty close to what you're asking for.
Okay.
The only difference is it's only based on one year, not two. So I'm looking at a range of 96 to a dollar, one, an hour for the hours worked. And it's based on a sliding scale. And it's really kind of user-friendly. We can plug in any number and every number in the spreadsheet changes. And for the firemen, it's, it's relatively the same. Tried to base it on the same logic. It, it, it's a little different with the firemen because the, um, when you're trying to establish a minimum and a maximum in the model, so I can take in all factors and, and figure out averages, the three full-time firefighters really skew the model. So in that way, in that respect, Rebecca and I have come up with somewhat elaborate way to factor in those factors and, and, and still make it fair to everyone.
Sure.
So we're in the ballpark. The difference is my model is only factored in one year and you're factoring in two. So that's the big difference.
I, I didn't realize yours was only 12 months, so that's, that's my fault. That's, so then my math would not add up.
Yeah, that's the data I was given.
Right.
So I ran with the data I was given to, to give me, you know, the min's, the maxes, the averages, and then figure out a, a, a logic-based tier system where the more, the higher the, you know, the number of hours, the bigger the reward.
Sure.
I don't think it should be a, a blank check evil to everybody because let's face it, some of you guys were on the road for, you know, 2,300 hours and, yeah, the, the max is 2,362 hours, but the minimum was 24. So it's hard to throw an equal amount to everybody based on that because.
Sure.
I don't think that's really fair to everyone, right?
Sure.
So we tried to factor all that stuff in and then tier it up. Get an average and say, okay, if we divided this, the high and the low by four ways, say, that would give us a break in each so many, you'd bump up. But we're pretty close to where you said. Now, can you tell me one other thing? Because I always loved, you know, the comparisons between Wendy's and McDonald's and Burger King and, and Five Guys and, and all these guys. The cities and towns you compared to Groveland, can you give me the list of, you know?
I can, I can only give you a, a few towns that I know of. Today they were at the seminar, it was a MassCop seminar, the Massachusetts Coalition of Police, because I was voted in the, um, as the president, this was. Because I was voted in the, as the president, this was basically a training seminar, how to help your union, things of that nature. And this was one of the subjects that they talked about. I know as recently, I believe Lawrence allotted, I was told Lawrence had given their guys a flat rate of just $5,000 per officer. I'm pretty sure Beverly was in the ballpark of about $2,000 per officer. So, and there was a few other ones there as well today. But I just, I can't remember the exact numbers for each place. Once again, I can reach out to the area VP and just ask her to give me whatever information she has on that. And then I'd be happy to give it to you.
Yeah, because right now Lawrence and Beverly, you know, comparative to Groveland, it's like Sax Fifth Avenue and to, you know.
Sure.
Joe's Discount. It's hard comparing apples to apples when you have those, you know, wealthier revenue generating towns. We just don't have that kind of, and I imagine their allotment was much, much greater than ours. Just speculating, I don't have that number, but.
One of the things I took into consideration was the amount of money that the town was allotted based on our behalf. And just one of the things they talked about was percentage-wise. So the thing I had actually written up based on the 22 months, not the year, and things of that nature. If it was to be that, we'll say, the dollar twenty-five there off my original numbers, it'd roughly be 11.3% of the total money that the town was given. I mean, I don't know how much that impacts everything else that's there.
If we went two years, you'd be around five.
Yeah.
For the total we got. But based on the one year, I want you to know that, I'm not sure whether 23 cents an hour came in, but it's not factual. Both my models indicate it's going to be between 96 and a dollar as it stands now. As I've modeled it up, but we can change that. I don't know where the final number is going to be, but that's where you are. That's where I modeled it up.
No, like I said, once again, I didn't know that it was going to be, I didn't know you had 12 months. And I just based it off of date-to-date, so.
I just went with the data I had and did some conversations with Rebecca on what we wanted to try to do to make it fair. We just kind of threw it in there.
Can I ask, Mr. Chair, I would ask you a question just to clarify.
Sure.
If you go with 12 months and he's at 22 months, does that exclude anyone in that 12-month period? Was that looked at? Assuming there's the same employees that were then and now, so.
That very well could.
Would that exclude some people?
We have had some movement in the department. So that very well could, depending on the 12 months that he's looking at, that could absolutely exclude some people. We have had a good amount of movement in the department in the last couple of years.
Well, that's an answer that's easy.
So only the people that are currently working?
Numbers came from, I believe, the departments and they're based on the calendar year from March 2020 to March 2021?
That is correct. That is from the dates of the Declaration of the State of Emergency on March 10th until it's ending on June 15th. And that was the original guidance that was issued when the interim rule came out concerning the American Rescue Plan Act funding. They have since issued a final rule which allows that timeframe to extend beyond what we understood as the eligible category. And that didn't come out until just earlier this January.
So I would say we're looking at the timeframe of March 2020 to March 2021.
Those are the numbers that we collected originally when we were putting together a proposal or just putting together an idea of whether or not people would qualify under the premium pay.
So that's the data we're working with.
I was a question. I don't know the answer, but would it be more fair to just capture the whole timeline and everyone that worked within it? So that's the population is the whole pandemic from start to now. If that's an eligible time period, it seems like that's, to me, the fairest. If you just narrow it, it's somewhat artificial. People worked after that.
Right.
Right?
Absolutely.
So, I mean, what do you tell them? They missed the cutoff?
Right, right.
I don't know that I want to do that. I mean, it's just food for thought for the board. I mean, if 22 months is permitted and that's, people work the 22 months, I want to say thank you to the people that stuck it out.
Like I said, the 22 months and the small math that I did today, that was just based on the conversation that they had at the seminar. It just kind of got, you know, the gears turning a little bit and I just, you know, I kind of went with that.
Mr. Chair?
Sam, Sam Jolton, I know you did a lot of work on this. What was the timeframe, to your recollection? How many months was it?
Initially, because the work I did was prior to January. So it was just during the state of the initial pandemic, the March through June.
Okay.
But again, like Rebecca said, they changed eligibility requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Yes, I guess I would just, I mean, I do think we're going to be talking about this more. But I do feel that there's a distinction between the employees that had to keep working when there was no vaccination and no way to work from home. And that coincides with the emergency declaration. And that also, to me, put them in harm's way, having to go out to work in that environment when others could stay home. And they just did not have a choice. And I'm not sure whether when they got home, they had to sleep out in the shed or what. But I'm certain that within each household and home, there was a level of stress during that period of time. And that's why I, in my mind and in my heart, go back to that particularly difficult period of time when we didn't know so much and yet some people still had to go out there to work in order to maintain the public safety. And that's just for more discussion. I don't have a decision tonight. That's just the way I've been thinking about it and reflecting on it.
Daniel, with a follow-up?
Is there any way we could get some information to see? I want to, you know, if we go with a 12-month period, would you be able to tell us if that would exclude somebody?
Yeah, absolutely. If you give me those dates, I can go ahead and.
Yeah, I want to be aware of that and follow up on that and see if that's.
I can go ahead and give you.
I hear what Kathy said. The risk was the unknown, you know? We know more than we knew a year ago, certainly.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, and, you know, people were working before the vaccines were available, so.
I can speak with the chief and, you know, just kind of narrow down who was there from, so it's agreed that it'll be March 2020 to March of 2021. That's the dates we're looking at.
Tell you what, my model is so sophisticated that this is what I'd like you to do for me. Give me that and then give me everybody and their hours beyond that for the full 22 months.
Okay.
And if the fire could do the same for me, I'll plug them into the model and we'll see what the model says. See what we can do. And then we'll have a more, a better number that we can toss around instead of just picking things out of thin air.
Okay.
Because it won't take me long to plug in that data and pull up.
Could your model be a hybrid where you have a weighted average of that first year, higher risks, say, and then the?
What do you think, Rebecca?
I think it can be done.
You know, it's just math.
It's a lot of.
But I agree with what Kathy's saying. I mean, the higher the risk, the higher the reward. I mean, that's kind of how I think, you know? If you sacrifice, you know, it's hard to put a number on it. It's kind of an abstraction in many ways.
Yeah.
Well, that's why we're trying to take that out of it and strictly model based on numbers and logic.
Okay.
And fairness and try to tear it up in a way that, you know, the folks that put in the most, are getting the most. The folks that put in the least still get something, just not as much. And the folks in between fall relatively spaced, evenly spaced in between.
I don't know how much fair you can make it. I mean, that's.
We're trying to do our best.
Yeah, no, that's.
If that's the spirit, I would agree to that.
I'm not trying to screw anybody.
No, but.
You know what I mean?
No, I'm being honest.
I just want the numbers to speak for themselves. And if you give me all the numbers, I'd be happy to run it for the 22 months with all the numbers, with the divisions in between. And this model, I'll show it to you when we're done. We can sit here, I'll show you exactly how it works. You plug in two different cells and everything's going to change and you can see what the outcome is. You can see the number of hours versus the dollar payouts. So you'll know quick math, whether it's 23 cents an hour or it's $2 an hour. It'll be very, very simple, the bottom line, I promise you. So if you want to do that and the fire chief wants to do that, send it to Rebecca. I'll have it by the weekend.
Okay. I'll reach out to Master.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Chief, you want to speak also?
I do. Real quick, I promise.
Okay.
Robert Valentine, Fire Chief and Resident 12 Marideth. The numbers that I had given and Mr. O'Neill alluded to, the entire pandemic, I worked full-time. The other two full-timers came on January 1 of 2021. So that's six months. But if you look at the hours that I gave you, in the very right is the total hours. The center aisle is, there's only four of us, the Fire Prevention Office and myself and the other two full-timers. That's how many hours we worked. The first row I gave you is the actual hours we were out on the street at incidents.
Call hours.
Call hours.
Yeah.
Actual incident hours that we were on the street.
Yep, I get it.
Those were between March 10th, 2020, June 15th, 2021, which was the state of emergency. And I think it changed at June 15th, 2021, because that's when most people in the emergency services could have been fully vaccinated. I can tell you, my initial vaccination was in January. I was fully vaccinated in February 15th because it was my brother's birthday. After that, we found out we needed a booster shot. Most of us in the fire department have gotten a booster shot. But during those 12 months of not being vaccinated, I can tell you, the call firefighters, who are part-time, come from their house, do their job and go home, made hundreds of contacts with COVID-positive patients. Thanksgiving of 2020, we had to go in and physically remove a gentleman that was just about breathing. All of us had full contact with that patient. That was before the vaccination. So that's why I broke it down to the actual call hours on the street.
I guess, to put it simply, I'm missing the point.
I'm explaining to you the dates because you were saying 12 months. I actually went to the June with the hours.
Okay.
As of June 15th, the state of emergency stopped. Supposedly. We're still in it, but the state of emergency declaration stopped where people could start going back to work. That's when most people in the emergency services were fully vaccinated.
So.
That's why they went to June.
All right, so what you're telling me is the call hours you have.
Are from March 10th, 2020 till June 15th, 2021. That was the declaration of the state of emergency.
2020 to June 15th.
2021.
2021, so.
The actual hours on it, in that column, are the actual hours we were in the field, making contact with people in the public.
So you have 15 months, is what you're telling me?
Yes, I have 15 months.
Okay, so I'll do the same thing. Can you tell me, can you give me a breakdown from, well, I see what you're saying now.
I followed what the initial thing was during the declaration of the state of emergency from the governor.
All right. Tell you what, because I like you so much, I'll do this, right? You've given me the first 15 months.
Yep.
Can you give me the seven subsequent months?
Absolutely.
I'll do the same thing.
Okay, and you want it, you just want the call hours? You don't need the hours that I was working because there are hours that I was working, I was in the office doing administrative stuff.
I'll be honest with you. I didn't know how to approach this when I first started to model it, so I modeled it both ways, just so we can look at it in a thousand different ways. I like that, options, you know what I mean?
I just thought it would be fairest. I thought it would be fairest if it was just the call hours for all of us, because those are the hours we were actually out in the public.
Yeah, your hours do skew the whole, the whole average min-max, I mean, just.
That's why I broke it down the way I did.
Yeah, so, fine, if you want to do the same thing, call hours, total hours, for the seven subsequent months, I deal with it.
Very good.
Yep, and we'll applaud it. We'll let the data, do what the data does, let the numbers run as the numbers run. And I don't know, I don't know how else to be any fair and then.
Well, no, that's, I tried to make it fair by just the call hours. The actual hours we were out in the public.
I'd love to be able to pull it up so we can show you just how simple it is and how, you know, fair we've tried to make it. But if you want to give me the rest of the data before we even discuss it.
Yeah, I can do that.
I'll be happy to plug it in.
I can forward that to you in an email.
That's great.
Okay.
That's all I need.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was simple, huh? We're not here to fight with you guys. We understand and we want to do the right thing by you. We really do. There's, you know, limited resources and we're going to try to make it as fair for the top guy as the bottom guy as we possibly can. And that's all we can do. And I hope you guys can understand that.
I do.
Great. Don't worry, we're in a happy place.
Any other on the list there, just to jump out at you that you want to talk about? We've got a long way to go on this because we're just in the initial stages.
Well, I guess my first comment would be, of the revenue replacement items, can we really separate want from need? I know people want things, but I see the town hall roof and I see that as a need, not just a mere want or a nice-to-have. I mean, then we can separate the real, you know, the guts of this.
Well, you could go down the face of boards on the public safety building. Those are more of a need than a want. Perhaps the generator falls into the same category, the HVAC for the building falls into the same. I'm not sure what shows up on here. What do you think shows up on here as a want rather than something that's needed?
Right away, the 10-ton swap loader for $383,000. Is that really a need at this point in time or is it a nice-to-have? Is the sidewalk reconstruction, where is that?
That's at the River Pine, so right outside here.
Where the tree roots have come up the Finland and broken the sidewalk.
So in the town hall complex.
From Main Street to.
Up to the Groveland Housing Authority.
Excuse me?
Up to the Groveland Housing Authority.
Yeah. That, the sidewalk out here crossing the police station to the town hall, that's absolutely a danger. On both sides, actually, if you take a look at it. And in reading in the document here that's presented, it doesn't meet the ADA requirements. It seemed like an awful lot of money to $240,000. But.
But I just, I just like to say that's true all the way down to the square. Because I see that poor fellow in the wheelchair has to get on the street all the way to the square because the sidewalk all the way down is just in horrendous shape.
And we put telephone poles in the middle of it.
Well, and then we want, and then we put another pole next to that pole.
Oh, why not?
Because there weren't enough poles.
We also don't own them. They're the, they're Mass DOT, so it's Mass Highways Road.
Ah.
So we don't really necessarily have control over Route 113 without permission from the state.
May I ask a question? Just on the, the way this list is organized, I know we're trying to put things in categories and saying this is response to public health emergency and then these are revenue replacement. Is there any part of the money right now that's restricted or have we gotten past that barrier?
So the latest final rule allows us to spend up to, for communities to have $10 million or less, can spend that in the lost revenue category, which is actually the most flexible of the categories. And you can use that on all local government expenditures except for those specific categories which are prohibited. which are prohibited, that are listed in the front page of that document.
Okay.
So technically, we could use any of it under that cap.
Right, I mean, and I'm assuming you're looking at the backup information for the items being requested here? So, so one of my concerns is similar to the COVID test, because I don't mind us spending the $6,000, but as time goes on, the things that we were all buying in the beginning, you know, wiping off our groceries and waving a wand over things, we've kind of stepped away from as we've gone forward. And I would just be wary of putting too much money, you know, like any big money, into something that down the line may be shown not to be something that we had to have or that we needed to have, because they found something else that would do the same thing. So I just remember, I think one of the library trustees referred to them as the light wands, like from Star Wars. And I think we ordered like a box of them, if I'm not mistaken. I don't even know where they are now. I don't think we're using them. So I just want to be careful that we don't invest in things that we're not quite sure are going to do what we need. Maybe they do something now, but it may not be something we need 12 months from now. So I would look through it and be careful. And then the other thing I was looking at is just to try and, even within each list, try to kind of rank them, if we can, as a priority for the town. Where do the taxpayers get the most bang for the buck? Because ultimately, that's one of the main purposes of this money to the town, is to give some tax relief to our taxpayers. We can use it to, now to offset things that we might have had to force a debt exclusion override for, which is good. We don't have to pay the interest, we can get the need. So, you know, I guess I would like to spend more time trying to come up with a method to, that we all agree on, on the board, to prioritize these in how they benefit our taxpayers and our residents, and make sure that we're doing that well. Because that's important to me, I mean, we can't possibly do a survey that tells us everything that everybody's thinking, but I think we have to try to prioritize and think about our residents and our taxpayers, and what would they benefit most from.
Okay, so Bill, with your comment, do you want, do you want these broken down? Wants as far as needs and ask those, to have that presented?
Sure would help me make decisions on where I think the priority of, you know, setting my priorities and where the money should be spent, absolutely.
Okay.
I will say that these are, the projects that are presented to you are the needs that the departments feel are needed in order to move forward. I know that the Highway Department, you mentioned the swap loader, I know that that has been on the capital plan for the last two years. It's been something that Rennie's been trying to talk about more and more, because the investment in this one particular equipment will save you from investing in five different pieces of equipment, because it has the multifaceted component of doing multiple different things, from plowing to catch base and cleaning, to all these different things that you would technically need different materials for. The sidewalk, we, like you said, we have complaints from people watching somebody in a wheelchair have to use the middle of the road in order to safely access that. Also going into the police station, I know the Chief of Police has mentioned multiple times, it's just you trip when you walk and even are trying to get across the street. I know that it sounds like the fascia boards, the fascia boards are not really important, but they're starting to be leaking, as you can see on the tops of the ceilings from the water that's getting in. They're not just requests that we said, hey, here's a bunch of spaghetti, let's throw it against the wall, let's see if it fits. We tried to meet the categories of the actual legislation to try and help our small businesses that are here in Groveland, offering them up to $10,000 for those specific businesses that did not take in that much revenue during the pandemic and were forced to work remotely, and didn't have the luxury of really working remotely, such as the restaurants and things of that nature. We might not have many of them, but they definitely felt the impact, those that we do have. So I know they don't seem like, you know, they're just kind of random, but they're random because they impacted us in a way that makes it relevant to try and see something done. I mean, one of the biggest things and one of the scariest things is the Patriot server that we have for our assessing data in the assessor's office. If that goes, that's our biggest revenue generator, property taxes. That's what we do, we, property and personal, property taxes. Without her ability to utilize that software and all of that data going down, we don't have it.
And I.
That's $8,000 that we don't have currently, but we need, because we haven't been able to have those funds to invest in that infrastructure.
And I get all that, but right now, I'm at a little over 113% of what we got. So the reality is, we have X, we're looking to spend Y. Square peg is never going to fit in the round hole, right? So something's got to go.
It's true.
So, in that case, what's the greatest priority? What's the least priority? Because we can't spend $284,220 we don't have. That's the reality. So, yeah, I know they need the truck, they say they need the truck. Where do we come up, if everybody needs everything, and there's an absolute certainty and there's absolutely no debate, where do we come up with the other $284,220? Just, and that's probably an approximation, right? Because none of these are hard quotes.
That's correct.
You see my, see my problem?
But I just mean that the departments aren't going to be able to necessarily take away some of the things that they feel as though are necessary for their particular one and leave another. I think that's the decision that the board is ultimately going to have to make and is tasked with making. I can ask them to see what they would like to offer as a piece offering to remove anything, to get that number down. But I don't think that he's going to value his truck any less than the water and sewer is going to value their project, or he's gonna, you know, it's just one of those things. But I can definitely go back to the departments and ask them if there is anything on this list that they would be considered removing due to the fact that there's not enough funds to fund those projects. We can certainly do so.
Okay, Kathy?
Just a quick question, can we assume that this is the list that we're not getting any more requests?
Something is coming through.
Okay, good, so if we work with this list and this is what we work on, we'll get to the end of this. I mean, it's, it's not a horrible project when you think about the fact that we're being given a fairly significant sum of money. So this should be a positive for the town. It's just a matter of sorting it out in a way that fits within the amount of money we've been given, correct? And we have up until 2024 to decide all this.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes.
Dan, you had something?
Yeah, the water and sewer, I mean, I think what makes that different than all the other requests is they have the ability to raise revenue through rate increases, and what would they do without this money? So the Highway Department can't send the bill and pass the cost on. So if capital improvements didn't budget for it, or we didn't budget for it, or it's just, what do you do to replace backhoes and trucks? I mean, that has to be budgeted on, I don't know if you get five-year loans or 10-year loans, but if you need them, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
It has to come out of what?
Yeah.
You know, free cash, maybe, right? Stabilization, debt, right?
Yep.
Debt exclusions, not my preference. Water, I mean, you know, I mean, if you had to, you know, they, water bills are up, my bill's up, but, you know, it's like, if you use more water, you pay more for it. So I think there's a linear approach to that, and the Water Department has the ability to raise revenue. No one else does, I mean, maybe the Garden Club, $6,000, sell more tomato plants. I bought, I think, five of them. 15 bucks.
All right.
Anyways, so I just, if we had to triage things, it'd be the water and sewer, it'd be, you know, you have other mechanisms of raising revenue. So I want to take care of the police, and the first responders first and foremost. You know, and I thought their request for 50,000 was a little light. I was thinking about double that, but I don't know what this board thinks.
So maybe we will ask Rebecca to, you know.
See if they can sharpen the pencil a little bit.
But, you know, Bill's math, and I haven't crunched the numbers to anywhere close to your extent, but if we're short, what, 280, 300?
284.
220.
Sorry?
284, 220.
Okay, 285, make the math easy for me. So, I mean, that might be half a loaf on the water project if we were to accept everything here. But, you know, to fund the water project and not fund the other things, I don't know that that's the way to go.
All right, Rebecca, you'll get back to us. Thank you very much. Chief, thanks for coming in. Garden Club members, thank you very much. Moving on. Build an inspector to discuss fee increase.
Always looking for more money.
No.
I was hoping, when you were coming late, I was thinking, good, Dan's going to be late.
Yeah, yes, no.
So.
Denied.
My cover letter that I sent you, I think Rebecca gave you the packets, talks about Al Seavey and Jerry Vines, who had been our inspectors for 30-plus years, or close to that, each of them, and retired Al when he was 90, and Jerry, I think at 87.
Wow.
They were both residents of the town, were along the way, did retire and continued to work with the town, and with that, were very generous in not looking for more, more money other than the 2% increase we gave them year after year after year after year. Once they retired, I was lucky to have Jerry's alternate, Rich Danforth, take the position, and I strong-armed my electrical inspector from West Newbury into the position, both with somewhat of a caveat that I would try and seek a fair wage for the position. I did a wage, you know, I don't want to call it a wage survey, because it's not. It was just a quick comparison between similar close towns, Merrimack, West Newbury, Salisbury, Rowley, Newbury, average seems to be somewhere around 14,000, 15,000 a year for the type of hours that they put in and the job that they do. Those are towns with similar permit types and numbers. So what I did also with the base, the permit fee, base fee comparison for electric, plumbing and gas, I took a quick look at that and I saw, again, we were severely deficient. Our current for like a new home on electric is 210, Rowley's 375, Newbury's 410, West Newbury's 550. We're just not in the ballpark. So I'm looking to at least get somewhere in the ballpark, and so I've adjusted the fees as presented. Also, I did find, which I thought was interesting, I was looking for something else and stumbled across just a graph that's not in your packet, which I'll just show you, if you don't mind. It's a comparison of the state average fees versus Groveland's average fees.
It's going to look bad.
Thanks, yeah.
And you can see the little purple lines, our Groveland dream line is the state, and we're about a third lower than the rest of the state. So, you know, I'm not looking for us to, you know, have any major windfall. I'm looking for, with this year's budget, to increase both line items by $4,000, to bring both inspectors up to roughly 14,000, so that they stay. They may if we don't, you know, they, they haven't really said too, too much about it, and they've been very good. But at the same time, I believe in paying people what they're worth or what a position's worth. And, you know, the changes in my fee schedule, I think, would bring us, again, much like I did to my own fee schedule for the building permits, would bring our plumbing, gas and electric fees to the low end of average for the area.
Questions for Sam, comments?
I have a question.
Kathy?
So I just wanted to, years ago, I'm dating myself now, we just paid them out of the fees. And then, and then, of course, then there was the building boom and everybody said, oh, they're getting too much. So that's when we went to this flat, I guess it's a stipend now that I'm seeing, it's a stipend, it's a flat no matter what. And I'm just curious, like in the towns where they're paid per hour, how do they budget for it and what do they, how do they handle it if the hours go over? Is it, I don't, you know what I mean, like?
Just to give you an example, the hourly rates in most of those towns are based on hours, and pretty much they don't change in these small communities. So West Newbury, for example, they're based on what's in front of you, and some weeks they end up working more, some weeks probably a little bit less. So it really does work out like a stipend, it was similar to what we were doing here initially. I think, I don't know if it was when Denise was here, when Greg was here, they got away from the paying a percentage, because.
Right.
You know, I can go back and do, charge you a reinspection fee, and every time I reinspect and fail you, I get more money. So, you know, that doesn't work real well.
Right.
Then they went to hourly with, I think it was with Denise, and the problem was, you know, you could have one week with, you know, 20 inspections, and they put a lot of time in, and you could have one week, like this week, not much going on.
Right.
And it just made it, I don't know, it just made it difficult to track. So we ended up going to just a stipend, we figured out what the value was, what it averaged out to during the year, you know, based on history, and we came out with the number of the, whatever it is now, the 9,000 or 10,000 they got.
Okay, but what I'm wondering is, I'm wondering about the towns of Newbury and Rowley and West Newbury, that says they have an hourly rate, is that just an estimate of what they're making per hour? Or are they actually paid that hourly rate?
It isn't, it's a little both. I've worked in West Newbury and Newbury. All were done exactly the same as here, without calling it a stipend, because they don't like calling it a stipend.
Right, okay.
So without throwing them under the bus and saying that, you know, the number's basically a number thrown at the position, and they get a set amount. I never paid my Newbury inspectors, nor have I paid the West Newbury inspectors, any different from week to week.
Oh, so it is like a salary, it's a salary?
It is, but they don't like to call it that, because it doesn't fall under a necessarily salaried position. And for some reason, I don't know, maybe Rebecca can tell us why.
I get it.
Towns don't like stipends, but it's a stipend. I mean, they're paid for the value of what the job they are doing is, not necessarily for the, you know, hours in, hours out.
Okay, so we don't even get into part-time or full-time hours, we just get it, nope. Okay, I'm getting it now.
Yeah, if it takes them 30 hours this week, then that's too bad.
Right, okay, so you've, you set a flat amount and you don't like to call it anything.
I don't like to play the game of what's the hourly rate.
Right, okay, okay.
I'd rather just call it a stipend and say, that's your pay for doing the job.
This is the pay for the position.
And then things like West Newbury, if something comes up with the school.
Yes.
Where it's out of the average or out of the norm, I have them track that separately, and then we can discuss how much out of that project we can do something different. So something like when Daley's, if his project ever gets underway, that may be something we want to consider. But at the same time, we'll also be looking at a significant increase in permit fees, because he's going to be looking at, you know, the per fixture count.
Okay.
Goes up to cover all those additional hours. So it may be a short-term adjustment of the stipend for a year, to say, hey, track what you did for number of inspections at this out-of-the-norm project. Or like Penticott, it turned out not to be as much as we thought, and I'm not giving them an extra dime.
Okay.
So, you know, and again, because we have the weeks like Christmas week that make up for it. where no one wants the plumbing inspector in their house Christmas Eve day.
No.
Dan, you had a question?
Yeah. Looking at these fees, so these are application fees. You want to go from 210 to 250. You want to go from 60 to 85. 60 to 80, 160 to 180. So everything looks like, okay, reasonable, 20 bucks, 20 bucks. Then you get to the bottom here. I think that's where the meat and potatoes are, right?
Where are we?
Yeah, all other permit costs of application fee. So is that just not all other permits, but every permit based upon the dollar value? You want to go from $2 to $5, that's two and a half times, 250% increase. So can you give us an illustration if it's a half a million dollar house? Are you gonna go up two and a half times on the value per 1,000?
What, what are we looking at?
Right here. $2 to $5.
That would be on all other commercial permits that wouldn't fall under a service replacement or a transformer. So that is pretty much a few and far between.
Oh, I see where he is.
It's just kind of a.
Here's what I'm not clear on, forgive my ignorance, all right?
Sure, no, not a problem.
This is just for wiring, okay? All right, so if the wire job is, what's the cost to run wires in a house? 15 grand, say, right? So you pay the 250 for the residential, if it's new, right? And if it's existing, it would be what? 150.
Correct.
Additions, remodels, right?
Yep.
And then on top of that, either 250 or 150, you pay a price, a rate per 1,000 or only on commercial jobs?
No, 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 just on the commercial, on the stuff that would, so residential is just those three prices. That's all you get. 250 for new, 150 for renovation, 85 bucks for everything else.
All right, we don't have too many commercial establishments in town.
No, no, exactly.
But the ones we do like Chesterton Inn and some, you know.
And most of what they'd pay would be falling under your transformer, you know, fees.
I guess, can you give me an example of what would fall under that? Because how did you come up with $2 to $5 and what's the rationale behind more than double in that particular fee when all the other ones are 20, 30 dollar bumps? I mean, to me, those are negligible. I mean, if cost of living adjustments, I mean, if you haven't gone up in how many years?
Ever, I don't know.
Well, I met you years ago, five years ago, I think, six years ago.
That was my, I don't think we did an increase in plumbing, gas, that was just on my end.
Just on your end?
Yeah, so these, I don't think these have been changed.
In the last decade?
I, I can't tell you.
Last three decades.
Can you just, for?
So it would be the oddball job, say you were wiring a generator. So say a generator's 20 grand, 20 times 5, 100 bucks.
So you went from 2 to 5 because we're just, we're so low compared.
Way below the average, I mean.
It's laughably, laughably low?
It is laughably, it, it, when we went and I changed my rates, the, you know, I know there was concern of people going, oh geez, we, we went way over. Because I more than, since I've been here, I've more than doubled my rates for the residential permit. And we, we kind of had the sense that people would come in and be outraged. The only comments I got were, it's about time, how come you didn't, how come it took you guys so long? We're still lower than most. And even with this increase, we're, we're gonna be in line to mid-range, if that. And mostly lower than most. On the commercial side, we're definitely way lower than most. I mean, we're not even coming close, but we don't have much. Really, the only one that the transformer piece is gonna hit is Chesterton. I don't know anyone else that has any of that size equipment. Your service replacements, again, I'm trying to think, you might hit 600, maybe at the gas stations. I mean, it's.
I just, I'm gonna be blunt, I want to make sure you're not picking on the commercial guys here, you know?
No, the commercial guys are still getting a hell of a deal.
It's fair.
It's, it's more than fair.
We're still gonna be low compared to our neighbors? I don't want to compare to Massachusetts because you got Boston, you got Aver- you got Worcester, I mean, you got.
On the, the residential will be low compared to our neighbors and compared to Massachusetts. On our commercial, we are ridiculously low to laughable.
What's the, what's the comparative rate on that 5 bucks you want to go to?
On that 5 bucks, most places are 10 to 14 dollars a thousand.
Okay.
Where, we're not even close.
Okay.
So, but 2 per thou, we had a job come up, but I forget what it was, not too long ago, but the rate we got for it was something absolutely ridiculous. It was, it was, I want to say like 40 dol, or actually, we bumped it to, to 60 because I had a minimum fee of, I think, 60 in electric. But it, it didn't even warrant, the guy was out there four or five times for 40, you know, would have been 40 bucks and bumped to 60. This, you know, he might go out now for 100 bucks. So we're still, you know, we're not gonna be, be there. And the, the chance of them doing significant work to trigger the service replacement or transformer replacement, I haven't, I haven't seen a transformer replacement of that size yet. And I've, I don't think I've seen a commercial service replacement yet. Probably your new, the only Baldini and Daniels, they'll each get hit for 80 bucks for their electrical, for their new equipment over there for their service. Where a residential, to show you how unfair it is, if you built a new home, you'd be hit for 250. The commercial guys are gonna get hit for 80 bucks. So if anything, we should be jacking that up a little higher. But.
And lower in residential.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair, one more question.
Jason, can you, can you check this mic, go ahead?
If, if we don't go along with this, what are the ramifications?
I don't know what it's doing.
I base my budget on the increase to an average pay for the plumbing and electric inspector for FY '23. If you don't do it, the ramifications are, they may say, we're not gonna do it either. They may stick around.
So we're below market on wages?
Absolutely. And then it just puts us in a position of, if they do decide to leave and we have good guys, we're gonna put out to bid a job for less than what the average is and we're gonna attract less than the average individual.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Cathy, you had a question for?
Just one last question, it's kind of a Rebecca and you question perhaps. Again, dating myself, because years ago, these positions basically paid their own salaries. Their salary was paid from the fees, so the taxpayer didn't bear any burden of these positions. And I'm just wondering, with the increase in fees, would we be able to support these positions completely on the fees? Or are we still supplementing from the tax?
Good question.
And that's like a forward-looking question for when we get more into the budget. I don't need the answer tonight.
Nope, I have the answer tonight. Because the, the reason I, I based these on what they are was based on historic permit counts.
Yes.
And what we would need to set our fees at to cover our proposed rate plus a, a margin of error of 10%.
Okay, so, so they would.
Equal, will cover it. And I did put the little fluff factor in there of 10% so that, you know, if for some reason we're a little low on the permit count due to something like a pandemic.
Yep.
You know, we're not dipping into the general fund that we should be able to self-sustain.
Okay, so these positions would be, be then, not just the increase in, but the amount that we pay these people would be sustained, balanced on the other side by the fees, for the most part, with a 10%?
Correct, this should pay their entire. Yes, we should be.
I'm in favor of that.
We should be, I don't want to say a free department, but a.
Sam, well, look, according to this, the last time these fees were raised by was July 2018. On the electrical wiring permit fees page, you get it crossed out, July 1st, 2018, in the proposed 2022?
You're right, Dan. I did do both. I didn't think I did.
Yeah, I'm wheels turning.
Catching me.
That's why you don't want me here, huh?
That's it, I'm too sharp. I don't remember what I did at that time, as far as how much of an increase it was. Obviously wasn't enough to cover what we need.
I don't have any, thank, thank you very much. Anybody else got any questions? Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, based on your example, $5,000 generator, you're gonna generate $10. What's it, what's the average time spent? If you were at $2, at $2 per, at your current, you're losing money, is what I think.
Yes.
How, how long does it take a typical inspection of that type? An hour?
We like to allocate an hour per inspection. Sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less, depends on who's doing the work. There's jobs I can go into and inspection's 10 minutes. Because I, I know the person, the work looks fantastic, they know their stuff, it's an easy run-through. There's other times where it should be easy and I spend two hours or more with the person because it's so wrong. The other thing we do is we have to input information into our system. So it's not just the physical looking at it, but it's recording the results, notifying whoever the contractor is, you know, is it good, bad or ugly? Rescheduling a reinspection then. So assuming, if, if we assume everything goes perfect, we assume about an hour. It doesn't always go as expected.
So even a $20,000 generator, you're generating $40 in revenue between, it, it, it's a loser. It sounds like it's, you're losing money every time you send a guy out there. So I agree that if, the fees need to be raised. But, and most of the fees are, are based on if you do it or not. I mean, it, it's not, you don't have to do any of this, you don't have to build a new home, you don't have to build an addition, right? So the, the fees are really based on if you want it. If you, if you don't do it.
Stuff like the.
You're not impacted by any of the fees.
Right, pretty much, the, the all other permits, the one that'll catch you if you have stuff that would have to be done. You know, my, I had a, you know, my, my service burnt out. Well, yeah, you're gonna need a permit, it's a bummer that you gotta pay for it. It's 85 bucks to have us process the paperwork, have the inspector go out, do the inspection, assuming it passes, then come back and record the decision for 85 bucks. If it doesn't, we go back out for reinspection. We do have a reinspection fee and 20 years I've, well, 18 years I've only charged that twice. Usually if that's someone being disrespectful and not showing up multiple times or I had one lady slam the door in my face telling me it was nap time.
It wasn't me, it wasn't me.
Wasn't, wasn't Kathy.
Shame on you.
I was very upset that I interrupted nap time. I did charge her $50 for nap time that day. Other than that, people make mistakes, they miss appointments, they screw it up. You know, unless you abuse it, that 85 bucks covers you from, you know, front to back.
So as I look at it, your permit base fee comparison, in new homes and additions, you're still well behind the average of the other three towns.
Yep.
195.
Less than half of West Newbury, and that's the same guy doing the same inspection.
Yeah, so the average is 445 for new home, you're proposing 250, puts 195. Have you thought about, listen, I'm just gonna bring it all up to where, where even with everybody, you know, just bump it up one, because it hasn't been, it hadn't been moved in so long and then you move the needle a little, is it time to just move the needle all the way to be in the middle or in with these other towns all at once? And then from there on, begin to stay competitive?
We, we could. The reason I don't, and I have a real problem with fees being used as.
Revenue?
A supplemental tax.
Yeah, so do I.
And a lot of cities and towns do it. I, I think it's bad practice. The state gives you, I think the law gives you about, it's either 10 or 15% as a buffer that you can take, which I usually account for 10% because very rarely do you go over that. Not to throw Haverhill under the bus, but something similar to Haverhill where they've got so much coming in, their fees are much, much higher than ours. You know, there, there's way too much money coming into that department. I like, you know, I'm a citizen, it's great. If I don't use it, my taxes are supplemented, it's fantastic. But I don't think it's fair. You know, the small towns like us should have the higher fees because we have less projects going on, less commercial that brings that dollar value up. But that's usually not the case. So do I think we should or would it be nice to and bring more revenue in? Sure. Do I think it's not the correct way to? Yeah. So that's, that's why they're low. Because this is, this is what I figured would cover what we need, plus, like I said, that 10% buffer. I'm not looking to line the pockets of the town or do anything like that. I just want to make sure we're covered so that when, you know, Ed puts in a new, you know, Olympic-sized swimming pool in his yard, the rest of you aren't paying for it.
Okay.
Dan, question, let's wrap this up and pretty quickly.
Are all of the inspections that you do mandated by state statute or regulations? Or do you do inspections that are off of that? Or outside of that, you know, regulatory scheme?
So building.
Like the burner, why, you need a permit for a new burner?
For a new burner?
Yeah, what were you saying there, your example? Did you say, no, I was talking about.
Generator.
Oh, a new generator, yes.
Oh, oh, generator.
So, so yeah, for building code, electric building, plumbing, gas, all is set by state standard. The stuff that I deal with for zoning and other issues, that's can be any or all of the above. It could be generated by what's in the zoning, could be a complaint. So, but that's, that doesn't affect permit fees. That's, that's the part of my position that the town benefits from our fees being what they are because I'm paid from this pool as well.
Yeah.
So that's a little gravy the, the town gets.
I guess, you know, I've always, you know, like if it's a repair, you don't need a permit sometimes. But if it's an improvement, you do, and I'm looking for Greg. So when do you not need a permit?
Any work, so, yeah, there's a section of the code and it needs to be updated. So any work, fair market label, fair market value of labor and materials over $1,000, that's not a regular repair, needs a permit. Way subjective, that 1,000 bucks, good luck trying to find a contractor to do any work on your house for less than 1,000 bucks. But essentially because of the Home Improvement Contractor Registration laws and Master No Law 143, which gives us our authority. If you contract with a contractor and it's more than $1,000, you should get a permit. If you yourself, as the homeowner, are doing work on your house and it's considered regular maintenance and repairs, then you don't necessarily need one. But if it's over $1,000, you should contact the building department and inform them of what you're doing. Because then I, I'm the deciding factor. So it's not a clear cut, do A, you know, get a permit, B, you don't get a permit. It's a whole lot of who's doing it and how much of it is regular repair and maintenance per the definition of what that is, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I made that completely clear for you, Dan.
You did.
Okay.
Under 1,000.
We have a motion for building inspector fees. You're requesting it to go into effect July 1st, 2022? I think we've, I'll have our questions answered. We need a motion, up or down?
Make a motion to approve the inspection fees as presented this evening. Do I need to list them all or can I?
No, I don't know, I think that should be sufficient.
Okay, so we can attach this to the minutes of the meeting to show that we voted these numbers?
You, you just stated that as presented, so.
Thank you, yeah.
Second.
Presented, there's a second, any further discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Got them all, awesome.
Three and a half anyways.
Three and a half, I'll take it.
Four in favor, one absent. How did you, how'd you swing that one?
I don't know, it's because Jason's not here. So, you know, this went through pretty easily, just kidding, Jason.
Okay, 46 Washington Street, update on property and CPA project phase one. Mike, Chief, thanks for coming in, explaining it.
Good night.
Mike Dempsey, 33 Uptech Road and Community Preservation Committee. So last May, your board received a CPA grant from the town for the project called New Mill Pond Phase One, which was focusing on the building and grounds at 46 Washington Street. This building is the last of the brick mill buildings left in town from about 100 years ago. And probably, as you know, has been used as a garage and shed for the. and shed for the Groveland Highway Departments and Water Departments and was vacated about a year ago when the Water Department moved on. So, the plan under the, uh, grant proposal was to clean up the outside of the building, add some landscaping, and get the property surveyed and start to determine potential future use of it. So, uh, working with water and highway, we've removed much of the town items stored there, especially the ones outside. And last year, Mass DEP removed all of their monitoring equipment that they had on the site from the Superfund effort. So, this year, uh, we expect to take care of the landscaping of the outside of the building, get the survey done, and work on potential uses of the building and requirements to improve and maintain it. As part of that effort, we are pursuing a temporary use of it as an art studio and workspace by a Groveland artist who's willing to rent the space. So, working with Rebecca, uh, I think I've done everything required to be able to legally lease the space. And we'll be coming before you at the next meeting to have that approved. So this is the first step in really investigating potential future use of this historic building. More, more work will be done as cleanup and landscaping proceeds this year and other measures that can be accomplished within the CPA grant. So, the, the idea on leasing it would be to cover the annual costs of the building, which include utilities, uh, lighting, the outside of the building, and insurance of it. And, uh, cu- currently, the town's paying for it and not getting anything for that, so our goal is to at least cover the costs that the town is paying for, uh, every month. So I'm more than happy to answer any other questions you might have about this.
Anybody got any questions for Mike? Bill?
You got a Vincent Van Gogh moving in, is that what it is?
Van Gogh.
Van Gogh Rembrandt?
Future.
They're gonna take up what, the person gonna take up one whole floor?
Yes.
And how long is the residency expected to last?
Well, I, I'm not sure, we haven't finished the negotiation with him, but I expect it would be for at least a year.
Okay.
Anybody else? Dan, question?
Yeah, just generally speaking, I mean, uh, who's managing that property? If you collect rent, where does it go? I mean, can you tell me about the
Well-
structure as a, a separate fonder?
No, I, I think the idea on the short term is that, you know, the costs are coming out of the general fund, so any rent collected will go right back into the general fund with the idea that it's gonna cover the costs on a yearly basis. Eventually, if we kept the building to rent it out, we might wanna start up a revolving fund so we could better track the input and output of what the building was costing.
That's where I'm going with that, I mean, if, do you have a projection of the total expenses? I mean, I kinda like to work with the answer and work backwards, so
Yep.
you get market rent on it, and, you know, if that's only a portion that's gonna be rented, if you fill it up, are you anticipating you're gonna cover the whole nut?
Uh, that's what we, our goal is.
Yeah, your goal is.
Well, that's what we'll bring forward to you at the next meeting, because we haven't really, that's our goal. We haven't negotiated yet with the person, the final negotiation, so that's what Rebecca and I are gonna work on.
Ultimately, we'd like to make it so that it's self-sufficient, so that they're not just paying a portion of the costs and the town subsidizing the people that are occupying it.
Right.
Because that could happen.
Right. No, that, like I say, that's our goal, and I, I think it's doable. The costs of, of the annual costs are not that high, so we should be able to do it.
Is there a separate insurance policy on that building? I know we talked about it before, forgive me if I got the answer in. It, or is it just part of our master kinda insurance policy, would you know, Rebecca?
So we just changed the policy to reflect a vacant building, um, because they moved out all of the materials out of that building. So I talked to the insurance agent and they actually said that if we change the use back over, having somebody in there, our policy, um, will go down, so it will be cheaper.
All right.
We can adjust the insurance, but we do have insurance on the building.
Along those lines, if it's business use, commercial use, usually in the private sector, you have net leases where they're paying a portion of the taxes and the insurance and CAM charges, common area maintenance. Is there a way to, so they're not just paying on a gross, uh, basis, a X thousand a month, two thousand a month? Is there a way that we can apportion the cost of the insurance? Or, or at a minimum, make sure they have a, you know, a million-dollar liability policy and a, and a fire and a, you know, a, you know, liability policy? I think that should be part of any leases that they have insurance.
Yeah.
You know, uh, and that's not crazy, buddy.
No, I know.
They just, I have insurance, I think a million dollars on my premises, like five hundred bucks a year. So it's not crazy, buddy. So I think that should be part of any lease, even if it's month-to-month or, you know, a year. They should have minimum, um, liability, you know, slip and fall stuff, they slip and fall, they're not gonna, you know, who's gonna maintain the snowplow or the removal of snow and ice? So, do you have a draft lease, are you working with town council? I mean, those are issues whenever you're in landlord-tenant land, I mean, the, the tenant can end up suing you. They often do.
All right, Kathy, you had something?
Yes, um, I'd like to talk a little bit about the project.
Yes.
Because it was, it was something I was happy to see going forward. So, um, when do you expect the survey to be completed so we can actually know for sure where the property lines are around that building?
Right, so, I am, my goal is to try to get it done this spring.
That'd be great. Um, the second thing is, I know we talked about the cleanup, like, on the interior, but the exterior backyard, I was hoping that the money would pay for the removal of the the horrible fencing and whatever junk is still halfway buried back there as part of the cleanup, I mean. The town did the damage to this property, it used to be a town recreation site, and it was fairly beautiful back then, and it's, it's become fairly horrible-looking now, so it really, um, to me, one of the most important parts of it are, are the restoration of the exterior grounds around this building, because, um, it's become a neighborhood eyesore. And it, and it's just such a shame, because if you look at that pond when it is allowed to have water in it, it's actually quite lovely um, and could potentially provide, um, a place for ice skating. I, I doubt we'd ever have a swimming place again like we used to, um, before I moved here, but, um, ice skating, um, we don't have in Groveland, and, uh, potentially, this could be a place for that. Um, there's nice trails all around back in there. And, um, it'd be great to see if we have use of those, where, where do we own on that property? And I, I know Rebecca's working on the, the other side of it, the valley screw side of it, and I don't know how all this will eventually fall together, but at some point, we might just have a property that could become beautiful again between both sites and usable. So to me, that's the most important thing to have happen in phase one, is for people to get the idea that this place is going to be restored and look, look much more like it used to.
Right, so Kathy, you know, as we, as you know, for that proposal, we had got, um, an estimate on some landscaping to come in and make it look a lot better than it, it looks now.
Yes.
And, uh, so that's what I, I think the concentration is gonna be for twenty twenty-two, is to get a couple more quotes to see, and also have somebody look at what design it might enhance the, uh, place looking better, certainly on the outside. And some of these things with the building itself and the inside are more peripheral, you know, that
Right.
they're gonna kinda carry us through for a little while till finally, maybe we put another proposal in or something to, uh, repair the building and turn it into whatever makes sense for, for a permanent use.
And I think the building inspector found a, um, what do you call it, a beamer, or something in the basement.
A supporting beam, yeah.
That needed to be fixed.
Yeah.
I thought we should do that before we rent it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but otherwise, I'm, thank you for carrying the ball on this and, and moving it forward. I, I know the people that live around there ask about what's going to happen there, so I think, um, they're very interested in what could happen.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike, I just have one, one, one question, the others have been answered. Uh, far as, uh, like, who, who's gonna pay for the utilities, but that'll all be in the negotiations.
Yes.
Uh, but one, one, just one thing that kinda concerns me. Uh, does a project like this, we're gonna go rent it out, does that need to go out to a bid? It just, uh, it just seems like, uh, you know, somebody approached, uh, whoever and, and just decided that they they might be interested in leasing it, but, uh, it, it, for the town to get the best bang for the buck, uh, shouldn't they be able to, uh, put that out with the size of what's available? And, and should somebody, uh, choose to, uh, lease it for a longer period of time? Or, uh, uh, for more money?
Yes. Well, Rebecca and I reached out to town council to determine what the requirements would be for renting, uh, space out, so I think in going through most of it, we, we are meeting all of the requirements. The, the biggest requirement that addresses what you're saying is that, uh, the lease, if the lease doesn't have a value of greater than thirty-five thousand dollars, then we don't have to do a request for proposals. So, to me, that doesn't mean, you know, what does that mean? Because it says thirty-five thousand dollars, all right, but, but for how long, you know? So, we calculate that the lease for a year or two, or, or maybe even three wouldn't be over thirty-five thousand dollars. So, it doesn't meet the requirement for request for proposal in that terms. The other requirement is that we had to do a lease value appraisal on the building, which we did. So, we had to pay for an appraisal of what the lease value is, and that will be taken into account when we determine the, the rent we're gonna charge. So, I think that, uh, we are meeting all the requirements for it. And, uh, you know, once the, I, I think some of these things would come into play more once we had a permanent, um, use of the building and, you know, somebody's leasing it for ten years or something like that, some, say, say it's a nonprofit or something. We would have to take those things into consideration.
Now, one other question, just a follow-up. Uh, there's no sewage up there. What's the chances that that has a septic system? If you've got somebody living, uh, somebody, uh, having a studio there, they gotta have a place to go to bathroom. But, uh, there's probably no septic system there.
It does have a bathroom in it.
Where does that go?
Uh, I-
Could go into the brook?
No, no. I, I don't think it has a septic system there. Uh, I, I'm not sure that there's not septic on that part of Washington Street.
There's no septic on there because it doesn't go beyond, uh, where the solar field is because of the brook right there. So it doesn't go up there.
It doesn't go across the creek? I don't know, I'll have to find that out. I can talk to the Water Department, they'll know.
There may never have been one there.
I don't know.
Could be a hole in the ground, cesspool.
Yeah, well, that could be, could be.
Could go right into the brook.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, and you'll, uh, after you get, uh, the negotiations, uh-
Yeah, we should be ready for your next meeting.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, next, uh, community compact commitment letter, Rebecca, you had some information on this?
Yes, so if you will all remember, um, we were going to apply for a wage classification study through a community compact best management practices grant, um, and we attempt- sorry. We attempted to, uh, apply for that grant back in August. We were contacted by the administrator of that program and informed that there was, um, a grant that we had tried to pursue back in FY eighteen that was not fulfilled, and there was another, uh, grant that we had outstanding as well that we were not pursuing. So I tried to plead with the gentleman and let him know that we are on a more organized path and that we are making sure that we are completing all of the grants that we have received. But he did not want to allow us to move forward with our proposal until we had a town administrator in place and until we had a commitment from the Board of Selectmen. So there is another community compact round opening in March. I've been working with Chris LaCory with the Cable Department to look into, um, fiber optics and expanding fiber optics between here in the library and here in the public safety building. And, and order to do so, we would need to have that letter of commitment signed by both the Board of Selectmen and myself, committing ourselves to the program. So in your packet, you'll find a draft letter, um, to Mr. Cronin at the, um, DLS, um, essentially documenting what it was that the Board of Selectmen had signed the compact and agreed to on January twenty-first of two thousand sixteen in the best practice areas of transparency, budget document, and regionalization and shared services. So I'm just looking for a vote to endorse this letter and signatures from all of you.
Okay, any questions for Rebecca? Bill?
Dan, go first.
Oh, Dan, go ahead.
Costs us nothing? What's, does it cost anything?
No.
And, w- w- is, what, what'll it take away from work time? I mean, is, what's the level of involvement and feedback and input that they need?
So we are already, um, we have already voted to, um, for the community compact program. We are already in the community compact program, so that, that work has already been done, the dedication to, to getting that designation has already been done back in two thousand and sixteen. This is just to renew our commitment to such so that we can further apply for technical resources under the program.
I guess I need clarity on what's, what, what do you mean by commitment?
So, because they were two-
We're part of a program or we're not, we're in or we're out, I mean, what do you mean?
We are part of the program, we did not lose our status or designation or, or the, the con- not contract, but the document that the Board of Selectmen signed back in two thousand and sixteen is still valid. It's just that they were worried because the town had applied for two grants and had done nothing with them. And the whole point of the program is to apply for these grants, which are the form of technical assistance and efforts to move the community forward to reaching those goals as they signed on to. So this is just, I guess, a request to say that if we were to move forward, we are committed to following through with the projects that we apply for.
So, when you say commitment, our obligations are that we listen to the feedback and we try to implement them, or we must implement the recommendations?
We try to implement the recommendations, and sometimes it's in, uh, I guess you, in the past, have gotten, um, monies for software assessments, um, studies, uh, for financial management. That's when you had looked at your OPEB trust and putting that together, and they take a look at the, the the details of such, and they advise on how that should be structured, what you should do, or do an actual assessment um, in cases of your inventory, ju- many different areas and topics. But yes, they come in and they do that work for you, and they recommend how you can move forward, and the town is, is supposed to take those recommendations and try their best to make sure that they see those forward.
So, we're obligated to follow the recommendations, and if it comes with a cost, is it an unfunded type of mandate? That's what I'm driving at, is it careful what you wish for, you might get it?
Just as much as a wage classification study, so you do a wage classification study, you're- So you do a wage classification study, your goal is to try and get the employees where they should be as part of the wage classification. There's no penalty for not doing so.
Okay.
There's just a goal and a commitment to making sure that you're using those resources wisely.
But software and technology upgrades would have to find money. If they recommend it, we need whole new systems, we need to figure it out.
That's correct.
But committing wouldn't require us to spend acts.
We are not mandated to spend monies that we do not have in order to do these programs. It's that we will make a good conscious effort to do the right thing and to make investments where we need to.
So basically, we're committing not to waste their time. We really haven't, we want them to give us some answers, and we'll look at them carefully and review them, and that's all it is.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, one quick question, comment. I'm no Shakespeare, but in your first sentence, the town of Groveland would like restate our commitments?
Yes, it should be reinstate.
Would like to? Yeah, okay.
I can make that correct.
I'm no Hemingway, but just wanted to put that out before I sign it.
Kathy, anything?
No, I think we just, obviously, we applied for grants and we didn't follow up and do what we said we were gonna do with them, so now we have to reinstate ourselves and make our commitment to be transparent. And if we apply for one of these community compact grants, our intention is to follow through on them to the best of our ability. Is that it? So I make a motion to approve the letter with the correction from Selectman O'Neill.
Now, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second, further discussion, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, one absent. Thank you.
Yes. Jason did say he would not be here tonight, just to let you know.
Board of Selectmen Policies and Procedures, current board policy for the Board of Selectmen. Again, we're short one member, this is something that should be taken up by all the members. We put this off till we have a full board.
I'd actually like to see some discussion of it, Mr. Chairman. We've tabled this, I believe, three times for one reason or another, and I don't think it would hurt us to put the clock at 10 minutes.
I'll make a motion to table this till we have a full board. You have a second? None? Okay, we'll continue. Kathy, this was something that you had...
Well, yes, I think, you know, all boards that operate, you know, we try to operate according to some sort of sense of procedures and policies.
And decorum.
Excuse me?
And decorum.
And decorum, yes. And to that end, I mean, there's the Roberts Rules, which is very involved and very complex, and we don't go to that highest level of parliamentary procedure in our language. However, you know, since the board has grown from three to five, I think that some operating norms would be a good idea. And then I looked through some of the other policies that prior boards had voted and realized that we may not be following policies that have been already voted. And so I do think that we should try to create, you know, as best we can, maybe one page at a time, some form of policies and procedures for this board. Other boards of selectmen have that, the school committee has that, I've heard them use it, follow the parliamentary rule that, you know, we go around the table one time, everybody has five to 10 minutes, and on the second round, it's three to five minutes. That's Roberts Rules. And then discussion is ended, and you move on, you either vote or move on. And it just gives every member the opportunity to have the floor, and it also encourages every member to voice a thought or an opinion or ask a question. And I feel that we would benefit from voting some of these policies. I don't know if anybody's even looked through them for tonight's meeting. Has anybody looked through them? Dan, have you read through them at all?
No, but if I could ask you a follow-up question, I mean, Mr. Chairman...
Go ahead.
You know, I mean, the way we've had is the chairman goes around the table and asks, you know, "Bill, you know, you wanna go?" And you say, "Dan first," I mean, we kinda, you know...
Well, I'd like to see everybody read...
Be pretty flexible, so there's a lot of order, it's just, you know, if you wanna spearhead something, Bill, and it's your, you know, something you're interested in, fine, go first, you know? If we have structure, we might step in the structure and say we wanna deviate from it, you know? I just, but the way we've had a chairman, I mean, above the board now, I was one years ago too, I just, chairman runs the meeting, goes around the room. We would have a need for that if we had a chairman, I don't know if it would be legal or ethical if the chairman said, "Okay, three of us can comment, the other two can't." I don't think that would be legally, you know, something. But I don't think we've ever run into that, it's just...
I strongly disagree, Dan, I mean, we've had some very dissimilar...
Kathy, Kathy, sorry, but Dan has the floor.
For how long?
But, okay, but again, if the matter is, you know...
A point of order, Chairman. Ms. Cashinels had the floor before she was interrupted by Dan.
Well, I asked if I could talk.
He asked for another question.
She still retains the floor.
Okay, all right.
Okay, he doesn't finish his...
He finished asking the question, he's gone on to another question or another comment, which is part of the reason we need some policies and procedures.
Is the gist of it the time limitation, Kathy?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Time limits.
No, it's not just about time limits, it's not that simple. And again, if you read through the materials provided, you'll see that high-functioning boards utilize a structure in order to become high-functioning, in order to get more work done more effectively, more efficiently, and also to collaborate and work better as a board. By having that type of structure, boards are able to accomplish more during their meetings and to spend less time quarreling over whose turn it is to have the floor. If we adopt some policies and procedures that we can all agree on, some common operating norms, I think we would benefit from it. But I think the first step is for all the members to actually review the materials, see what prior boards have voted, see what other documents are available, and to come prepared to actually talk about it, because it's not just about one thing. It's about creating a platform for our board and future boards to make this form of government higher-functioning and better, to improve ourselves. That's all, and that's all I'm talking about. I'm not trying to make one petty little rule and snap my fingers every time someone breaks it. I'm telling you that I've served on the school committee, and I've served on the Board of Selectmen years ago, and I've served on the finance board, and I've served on a lot of different boards. And then I went and read about boards in other towns before I brought some of these things forward. I'm not creating them out of thin air, I'm looking at documents that have been tried and tested, and I'm thinking, it's time for our board to think about creating that kind of handbook that personalizes the Groveland Board of Selectmen. This is how, this is when we want our agenda ready, okay? This is how the meeting will run. Somebody comes in to interrupt our meeting, what are our, what are the protocols for that? Some people we let interrupt, some people we tell them no. We need to just think about that because the appearance of how we behave and how we act matters. We are the highest board in the town, and I would like us to reflect well on our residents and for them to be proud of the things we do, even, maybe even when they don't agree with the decision we make, at least they know that we had a process and we followed it, and we were transparent and honest about it. So all I'd say now, my 10 minutes is up that I asked you for, Mr. Chairman, is that if everybody could please look over the documents and be prepared, I don't think the discussion would take very long.
Okay, anybody else? Bill?
Total agreement with her, I think structure is always a good thing, I think order is always a good thing, I think a understood level of decorum is always a good thing, it helps move the meetings along and it helps be productive and efficient. We don't have a lot of time in a month, we shouldn't waste any of it if we can. So I agree with Kathy that, you know, some structure could be implemented and put to good use. Improvements, nothing is ever perfect in this world, so there's always room for improvement no matter how perfect one thinks they are or what one thinks may be perfect, there's always room.
Okay, Dan, oh, you had something?
Yeah, just, it's tough to gauge, I mean, if it's a matter of decorum and fairness, I mean, some topics, you know, you could comment on them in two minutes or less, and others require, you know, much more comprehensive thought and follow-ups. Oftentimes, I'm sitting here talking to somebody, I don't always think of something, I like to go back and, "Oh, I didn't think of that," you know? So if we're so rigid, you know, I like structure too, I mean, I have a job where everything that I do seems to be methodical, you know, you skip steps, you fall downstairs, you cut corners, you go in circles, you know? So it says, so it goes. But there's something to be said for, you know, we don't all wear, you know, size nine shoes, I mean, you gotta be flexible, but in terms of decorum and fairness, yeah, just in the past, you know, sometimes we don't get along or we see things differently. You know, with all due respect, Bill, I mean, what might be a waste of time for you might be important to me. So, you know, I hear that, you know, theme that we're wasting time. Well, you know, even if it's four to one, I mean, you know, you respect the minority's point of view, that maybe it's not a waste of time. So I think it's the differences of opinions and the acceptance are, you know, just agree to disagree sometimes, not so much, you know, and I'm not saying, Kathy, you know, you're gonna pick out some petty rules or anything, I don't think any of it's petty, but if a goal is ultimately to be more efficient, be more professional, then I think we work within our framework and just, you know, if we're on topic, you know, the chairman can say, "Two minutes, Kathy," you know? And then, you know, if everyone doesn't wanna use the two minutes, they can yield time, they do that, you know, Congress and Parliament, "I yield my time to Kathy, you grab my two minutes if I don't have anything to say on it." So I think we can give and take on that, it's just, bottom line is just, the way I see it is, you know, we all have different opinions, whether it's political, liberal, conservative, you know, you gotta, you know, I think culturally in America right now, there's an intolerance for listening, and sometimes listening is painful to your ears, but we're all sworn, I only made one oath of office, it's uphold the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, you know?
That's ten minutes.
First amendment is, you know, you should be able to criticize government, sometimes that's painful to hear.
Way to border, Mr. Chairman, he's off top.
Clean the water?
He's off topic completely.
So, no, that's...
He's off topic completely.
Not off topic, and again, it's a perspective, Kathy, I mean...
Discussing national politics is where we are right now.
No, it's not national politics, and let me talk about that. Ideology exists at the local level like it does at the national level, and you...
Point of order again, Mr. Chairman.
All right, state your point of order again.
The topic was the procedures and operating norms of the Board of Selectmen, period, nothing beyond that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just one more comment, three seconds. You can't control topic, Kathy.
Bill, go ahead.
It's not that anyone is denying anyone the right to speak or ways to, it's, nobody should be allowed a 20-minute soliloquy. If you have a point, state it, and everybody would be interested in listening and hearing that point. And what you say about listening is true, the vast majority of the folks, they don't listen, they're either talking or they're waiting to talk. There's no listening in between, it's sad, and it's true. What we wanna get away with, away from, is the soliloquies, the dissertations, the pontifications that have no bearing on the subject matter typically that began the discussion. I think that's what I see a lot of, I think that's what Kathy is trying to express with these policies and procedures, that so often we stray so far off the reservation from the original topic at hand, that the original topic at hand becomes lost in the great devolving conversation and the rabbit hole that it descends into. And I think that's where we waste time and energy because we're just so far off topic at certain points.
We didn't do that tonight.
To a certain point, we did sometimes, while, I don't know if I'll agree with you 100%, but I think we were closer than we typically are, yes, I'll grant you that, but I think, again, there is nothing in this world that is perfect, and so therefore, there is nothing in this world, in my opinion, that couldn't stand for improvement. If you disagree with me, please point out anything that you believe is perfect, other than Jesus himself. Thank you.
Okay, so everybody will read these over and we'll put on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss a couple of topics at a time at each meeting till we get this thing So we can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Town administrator time, Rebecca, you got the floor.
So just a couple of things, I just wanted to first acknowledge the Highway Department and all of their efforts for the storm over the weekend, they did a great job, it was really nice, they kept us all updated, let us know what was going on so that we could inform you if there was any issues, but everything went smoothly, so I'd just like to commend them for their hard work, because I know it was a very long day and it wasn't an easy thing to do. Then also, just to let the board know that we had our first monthly department meeting this morning, so that was fun and exciting, I think it was pretty well-received, it was really nice to get a chance to go around and have all the departments weigh in and give some updates about what they're working on and actually have a communication and a dialogue. We will be breaking them down to have bi-weekly meetings as well with a department focus, so specifically, I'll be sitting down with just the Building Department, just the Council on Aging, just, you know, the Finance Department, and getting into the nitty-gritty details of each so that we can see how we can collaborate, goals, things of that nature. But the monthly department meetings will be just a general overview and give the departments insight into what other people are working on. Then just to let you know that the Planning Board will be meeting tomorrow, and they will be selecting their master plan steering committee, so I'm not sure if there's any Board of Selectmen members that are interested in being assigned to that committee, but just to let you know, so let me know if there is, and we can definitely add your name to the board for their approval. Then to also let you know that the local election calendar has been posted, the clerk has this up on the website, the first day to poll nomination papers is February 1st. I will be putting up a list that the clerk provides me of all the vacant seats up on the website for any of those interested in pulling nomination papers. Then just another quick update to let you know that the governor has released his state aid numbers, he's looking at a 2.7% increase, not exactly what we were hoping for given the projections of revenue that came out from the state, however it is what it is. And we also got some of our other preliminary cherry sheet numbers, which were lower than the former fiscal year, so the revenue projections were not exactly what we were hoping for. And there was some noise with the school releasing their numbers, which are also higher than expected from the Penn Ducket Assessment, higher from Essex Tech, and higher from Whittier with the enrollment in both the latter two of the schools. The budget has gone out to the departments, departments have returned their budget request, many departments have actually exceeded the 2% that we had instructed them to meet, so this will also lead to a lot more difficult conversations in the near future. But we are moving forward, we are getting you those numbers, the Finance Board has begun to meet, they had their first meeting last week, they'll be meeting again with some other departments, I believe, in next week or the following week, but we are making strides, and I will definitely keep the board updated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Selectmen time and reports, Kathy?
Nothing new to report, just wanted to say in general to the people of Groveland, one of the reasons that prompted me to step forward and to serve on the Board of Selectmen was the general outpouring of support and compassion when our daughter Jackie died, and this is the ninth anniversary of her death this week. And I am very, very grateful for everything that the people of Groveland have done for us at that time and thereafter, and it is my pleasure to serve and give back to the community as best I can. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Bill?
Yeah, I echo Ms. Oldham's comments about the Highway Department, I thought it was a fantastic job, and if you'd... And if you drive around the other towns and cities around our community, it's, you can see the great job they did. The other thing I'd like to address is a comment that Selectman McDonald made last week. At first, I was quite upset, but then I realized, I think what we have here is what I like to refer to as a cool-hand Luke moment. It's more of a failure to communicate. So, I guess when you call me or other folks nervous nellies, at first I was angry, but then, you know, I think maybe it's just a misunderstanding. I don't think you meant that comment in the way it was taken. But I think you ought to understand that you can call me a nervous nelly. You can call me any darn well-name you please. I don't really care. But what you need to understand is, I'm going to do whatever I have to do, which is what a lot of people are going to do to keep themselves safe, to keep my two-time cancer-surviving brother-in-law safe, to keep my family safe, to keep my newest grandson, who spent the first, seven of his first 10 days in a pediatric ICU unit, safe. So, the name-calling doesn't really get us anywhere. But I want you to understand my perspective. I'm doing it for you as well as anybody else. Because anyone that tells you or anyone that says that they know everything about this virus and what's going to happen tomorrow is one of two things. They're either a complete liar or a complete fool. And neither one is very good. Because the fact is, no one knows what tomorrow's going to bring with this virus. So, people are cautious, rightfully so. They want to protect themselves, rightfully so. They're trying to do the best they can for themselves and for their neighbors as best as they can. I just want you to understand that, Dan. It's not that we're against you. It's not that, you know, nervous nellies or whatever you want to call us. It's, I guess, we have concern. We have concern because almost a million Americans have died so far. We don't know what it is. We're being cautious, overly cautious, maybe. But, you know, personal freedoms. I have a personal freedom to smoke. Dan, you don't know how bad I want to light one up right now. But I understand that by lighting that cigarette up in this room, there's a potential risk that I contaminate you, causing you severe illness or possibly death. My compassion for you as a human being prevents me from lighting that cigarette up because I care for you. I don't want to see you sick and die from something that I did in exercising my personal freedom. So, what I'm trying to say, Dan, is try to see some things from the other side. We're not nervous nellies. We're worried, we're concerned, we don't know. And at the end of the day, we're trying to protect you as much as we're trying to protect us. And that's all. Just have a little compassion for us, a little tolerance for us nervous nellies as you go through life. Because we're not assured as tomorrow as you are, I guess. Because I was always brought up to be told that. Nobody guarantees me tomorrow. Maybe they guaranteed you tomorrow. But nobody guaranteed me tonight, never mind tomorrow. So, that's all I want to say. I don't think you meant it, but I just want you to try to understand the other side. Thank you.
All right, Dan, Selectment time?
Yeah, I just, I care about people. Most things, you know, there's a matter of degree. Last meeting's topic had to do with the summer program mandating children be vaccinated to participate. I understand that anyone is at risk, you know. If you have cancer, you have diabetes. Certainly, it's your choice to get vaccinated. But what I am concerned about is excluding other people that choose not to. And I'm, you know, steadfast in that it should be parents' choices with their physicians, if they choose to, to decide what's best for their children. You know, I'll dig my heels in on that, that that should not be the government's role. It should not be to the exclusion of those that, you know, do not want to take a chance with something that doesn't have long-term studies. So, I ask all the people out there to give that some thought in respect to those people that have concerns about their children and long-term outcomes. Whether they come to fruition or not, time tells all. But, you know, to impose that upon children and a requirement to use a public facility when, you know, to clarify my nervous nelly comment, follow the science. And I, Bill, I hope you understand this. I try to get facts. I'm not reading Mother Goose as you've accused me of, okay? I go to the Mass Department of Health. I go to the CDC website. I try to get raw data on who is actually impacted from this. I think it is a failed public policy and that we don't get good information to distinguish those at true risk of harm and those that are not, and those that can transmit and those cannot. So, to, if you're concerned about your children, you get them vaccinated. But to exclude other children from in that program, do the vaccines work? Is it good enough to protect those children? But it shouldn't be a situation where it's us versus them, where if you're nervous about a loved one who might be 82 years old, why should our society impose, you know, a 12-year-old getting vaccinated because you're concerned about the 82-year-old? That's not the only way to protect the children. It seems like a one-size-fits-all situation. So, it's just the vaxxed against the unvaxxed. So, I don't like that. I think there is a level of anxiety in our society. Whether or not I'm being flippant, saying nervous nellies or not, okay. You know, I'll give you that. But the point I'm trying to make is that we don't have long-term studies, okay? So, respect those parents that choose not to. Parents got to go to work, okay? So, you can't put them in that program? So, it's going to be, you can't eat in a restaurant because you don't have a vax card? I can't get into the Boston Garden without showing papers? To me, honestly, people, you know, you get, you know, Benjamin Franklin said something like, fuck you. You give up, what, a little bit of freedom for safety? And you deserve neither. It's not an absolute. It's a matter of degree. But I want to provoke people to think about these things. Do we really want to have a one-size-fits-all policy? And when you involve children, you know, I got a problem with that. So, do I say the wrong thing and I don't articulate properly? Yeah, I'm no scholar. But from my heart, I don't want to impact children negatively. And I do not want the government in Groveland or Massachusetts or the United States of America mandating children getting shots that only came out a year and a half ago. That's all, Bill. I don't want to hurt anybody that is sick. If you have a loved one that's at risk, get the vax, get the boosters. Wear surgical masks, wear N95. Stay away from public locations. This is probably the most unhealthy location I've been all week. It's a windowless environment. There's no ventilation that's worth anything in here. I breathe fresh air. I try to practice safeguards. I don't hear anything about general health, you know, in our society. So, I have problems with the kind of the one-size-fits-all. And it's just the solution is wear the mask and get vaccinated. And if you don't, you don't care about people. I do care about people. I do.
Okay, I got nothing other than, again, I echo Bill's comments. And Rebecca, the Highway Department did a great job. Always superb. Older unfinished business? Anybody got anything? Nothing? You had something?
Yeah, I just want to thank the, you know, cable guys. Got a basketball game on there. I hope we can get, you know, this winter wrestling, maybe. There's some other sporting events. I think it's a.
Spring baseball?
Spring baseball. I mean, I don't, hockey, I don't have any idea. And I want to tell you what to do type of thing. I just want to get a dialogue, us, people in society here, what they'd be interested in seeing on there other than the Board of Selectmen three times a day or zoning board. I mean, you know, that's important too. But it's nice to see the Christmas concert on there. It's nice to see the holiday concert. It's nice to see some sporting events on there. There's girls' basketball. The varsity team's doing fantastic this year. Maybe we can get a few of those games on there. High school wrestling and whatever else, anybody else. But I'd like to expand upon that programming. If it's within the budget, you have the staff manpower. And if you don't, maybe there's a way to collaborate with the other, you know, towns and maybe borrow some, maybe video content from, you know, the high school. You know, they'll post some of the games online. Maybe you can just grab the video if they let you. But I just want to open a dialogue on that. I think people like it.
A lot of, a few positive comments, nothing negative. The people that I heard from, I thought it was fantastic.
We do have more happening. I am going to record the other two games that are happening.
Yeah.
I was going to ask you about dates to confirm with the.
Well, athletics is on the, you know, PRSD website. I don't know if you've reached out to anybody over at the high school or even the middle school. I don't know what's going on there, even the bag now. I, I know there are things happening out there. And I just, in this time, in the pandemic, I think it would be positive for the community to see something else other than us talking about money and budgets. It's all about money.
Thank you. Other items aren't reasonably anticipated, nothing. Correspondence, we got VZ Park Quarterly Reports. Thanks, Mike, for supplying that stuff. Couple of, a couple of letters that, they didn't make it into the correspondence. Must have come in late, Rebecca. They, these must have come in late. This thank you letter to Larry Kelly and to Kevin Kiva from Northern Tree Service LLC. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, age 56.
Second.
Motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, one absent.